I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started, something you may or may not know, one of our board members suffered the tragic, unexpected loss of a few days ago. It's been very emotional, trying to find for the board. Mrs. Albert is a good friend, a good person, and probably our hearts will act for her. Bear with me. I would like to ask the board for a moment of silence, remember. Can I get a roll call, Mr. Scott?
Yes, Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Beckman. Mr. Granger. Mr. Jarrett.
Here.
Mrs. Marco.
Yeah.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Scott here, and Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Amy Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. All right, procedures for public participation. Prepare to state this letter to be read to the board, shut the copy, designate the board president prior to their meeting address. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising in approach to the microphone stating your name and address, assigning you on the sheet provided. You will be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When the three minutes are over, you will be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda as well as the agenda items acted upon, comments will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. Under announcements, we have no agenda edits. There will not be an executive session following tonight's meeting, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Volker for the superintendent of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett, for the comments regarding Mr. Albert. It's very difficult at times like this to talk about all the celebrations and great things that have been going on. So I apologize if I share some things that may seem unpleased, but I think it's important that everybody's aware. This past week was homecoming week for our students. It was really neat seeing the senior nights and students that represented the hard work that they've done. Thirteen years in preparation for these seniors to get to where they were, or doesn't matter, it was volleyball, soccer. And then we had our football game that was next Friday, and our players were able to get the first win of the season, which was a long time coming. We were extremely excited about that. Those seven-six victims, that was exciting. Right before that game, we were able to recognize at the World Fame Ceremony, our 1997 baseball team for their major accomplishments. They've given to Dan Boone Area School District and greater community. So those are really nice events. This coming Saturday, off District Grounds, about right next to the middle school, we have Harvest Fest. That's going to be Saturday. That's run by our educational foundation, which they're really rebuilding and building back. They're stronger, and we're excited to support that work. It's also quite an accomplishment, but our high school was also just recognized as an A P honor roll school, which is again, something that we haven't done since 2017. So it was really nice to get that recognition for our students' hard work once again. That is the superintendent of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. We have a student board representative's report, but that's too late.
It's not good time.
Right, so we're going to move back a second. Under action list number two for finance, action list two A one through two A five, these are the contracts that we were just discussing in the facilities reports. Anyone have any questions or concerns about the items that we discussed in the facilities committee?
Just for anybody who missed it, the altar quote for the water beer, by the time the boat happens to the next day, which is just like an extended scope. No change, but it costs them.
Thank you, Mrs. Olson. Public comment, what are any of those? All right, moving on to number three. Under programs, we don't have any items to discuss. Under personnel, we have retirements of reservations, number four A one. These were sent out to you on the agenda. Any questions or concerns on items four A one? Number four B one, we have leads. Any questions on that? Number four C one, we have appointments. Any questions on those? Any public comment on personnel items? Move to presentation by board members. Mr. Scott, secretary of correspondence.
So we have received two emails that came in over the last, I guess, thirty days. One of them is from Rich Martino, who's here tonight regarding budget issues. Our second one is from Crystal Tagliver. I hope I'm saying it correct about issues with the athletic department. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Berks County Air Media Board Report. BCIU met on the nineteenth of September. It was general housekeeping. There were no real items of new personnel contract issues that represented the board for vote. The next meeting for BCIU is scheduled for October seventeenth, which will be this upcoming Thursday. That concludes the BCIU report. Berks Fairing Technology, BCTC Board Report, Mrs. Thompson.
Okay, we met on September twenty-fifth. Their, the education foundation, they just started two years ago. It's growing, and they have raised $150,000 so far, so that'll help cover, upgrade the classrooms and programs without raising tuition. And when our arrival and dismissal of buzzes, getting a lot of students are getting almost three hours of class time when they're at BCTC a day. And then, believe it or not, we discussed the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school calendar. It was a rough draft, but they'll be sending school districts with a start date of August twenty-fifth and an end date of June third. The next meeting is October twenty-second.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Next, we have the committee on legislative action, the board report, Mrs. Beckman.
We met September tenth with a lengthy meeting, so I have a lot of notes. The title, it says high level, and possibly can't be expected for. So on the topic of discussion, which is pretty much on the purpose of COLA, they like to re-present that. And then we had a Dr. Smith who came on board, came on the meeting to discuss the basic education funding and how this funding factors in within the school district in the categories of poverty, constituent poverty, median household income, number of households. And it went from five point six million to seven point eight million. Something new that they discussed was hold harmless relief supplement. Their allocated funds is sixty million, so a whole paragraph having that. If you have any questions, you're more than welcome to reach out to me for clarification on that. They went over the adequacy and tax equity supplement. There is a new formula calculation within their ready-to-learn block grant. So that she went ahead and explained some of the numbers and the calculations there. There is the adequacy supplement in the amount of four hundred and ninety-three million funded through the ready-to-learn grant. And that was open, I think, a week prior to when we met on the tenth. And then, yeah, they have the tax equity supplement, thirty-two million. That's also been funded through the ready-to-learn. There is a special education is receiving a seven point eight percent increase from 2023 to 2024. There is a continuation of universal free breakfast. Students identified as eligible for reduced-priced lunches through the national school lunch program will not be charged for their meals. I know here, Dan Boone, they have free breakfast, so that's cool. Cyber charter, special education tuition rate calculation change, she went over that. There's a lot of like financial numbers and calculations that were updated. They touched on school safety and health and facilities. There was an improvement grant program that spoils out, and I did send a communication out to everybody regarding that. Apparently, it was already about that, and he was on top of that. So that's what I have for the COLA. Actually, there's more, sorry, excuse me. Forgot to stick pages. It was a lot, it was a long meeting, guys, it was long. I'm here there.
Yep.
So there is early childhood learning intervention, career and technical education, dual enrollment. There was seven million grant that was actually going to go out for that. There's funding for private schools, they discussed that, and educated shortages, teacher and school personnel shortages. And so, and the adequacy of funding, they went over that. They went over state of the superintendency, which there was a two percent increase, position change, P A. Seventy percent of the superintendents, they mentioned, left their positions in 2022 to 2023. The average stayed about three point five years. Tom, would you say a little? Okay, function, one, jeopardy stability, and P A was calculated, and they did all that chilial calculating superintendent from the state of Pennsylvania. Goals to accomplish, they would like to develop a unified vision for K through twelve public education in Pennsylvania, identifying barriers to education innovation and resolutions that overcome barriers, reframing public education, redefining school practices to meet our students' and current needs. And then the P A graduation requirements, measuring the mastery, not see time, call to action management, support flexibility and structure and advocacy priorities. So that was that, COLA, sorry, it was a long meeting. But I got nips, guys, five nips.
How much coffee was that?
That was a lot of coffee, that was at least like twenty ounces of coffee.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Moving on to other reports, we have the Berks E I T tax.
Oh, a proud to mention, next meeting is November twelfth.
Addendum.
So the Berks income tax took place on September twenty-sixth. And basically, we went through the August twenty-twenty-four financial reports, which included the statement of net position, income statement, gross E I T distributed budget versus actual. Actually, these meetings are typically pretty quick, but the solicitor talked the majority of the time. He gave an update, prosecution update on delinquent employers, and then he went into detail over the prosecution process for delinquent employers. So the next meeting is December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Nice job, Mrs. Olson.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Marco. Amy.
What's that? Yeah, if it's not listed here. I would say here, but we can do an update for everybody. Oh, look at the next scale. Yeah, that's fine.
Wait a second.
Well, with the education foundation.
Okay, we're going to give it out there in laser education application at the next conference. Any public comment on any of the presentations by board members?
Rich Martino, I have a township, and I want to discuss the secretary of correspondence, but before I do, I appreciate your moment of silence, but I think it was utterly disrespectful that this meeting was not postponed after what happened with Mrs. Albert. There was no reason you had to optimize meeting. Anyway, due to conflict with the school soccer schedule, I've missed the last few school board meetings, and I'm told, and I saw tonight, there's an effort to stop Mr. Scott from reading public correspondence to the board. Having read the minutes of the meetings I missed, I'm confident there's no public board discussion on the matter and no public vote. I think the intent to not read correspondence from residents is improper, egregious. I will thank Mr. Koppel for guilting the board into reading my email regarding the August fifth meeting, which included financial decisions. Improper because, as I just stated, it was never publicly discussed and voted on by the board. It's not an executive session topic, so it had to have been a public discussion. And without a public vote, none of you have the authority to make such a decision. Members serve as part of the board, not as individuals. And when I'm finished speaking, I'd like to know who made the decision, why they made it, and on whose authority. And please don't tell me it was the decision of the superintendent, because he has no authority to make decisions for the board. Egregious because I think you forget to whom you report, and I saw that in the policy meeting. If you refer to your own organization chart, you'll see the administration reports to the board, the board reports to the community. And that doesn't just mean when you're running for office. And the more important question is, why wouldn't you want members of the public to know what other residents think of what they're doing? I believe the superintendent, while sitting as a non-voting member of the board, has publicly proclaimed the belief in transparency, one definition of which is the quality of being open to public scrutiny. The primary gist of that email was in regard to the overburdening decisions on taxpayers made regarding spending and school property taxes. If you honestly think you made good decisions based on real data, then why are you afraid to have the public hear opposing opinions? In conclusion, I suggest you stop acting like members of the public are a nuisance, and also publicly discuss and reconsider this improper, egregious, tentatious type of comment, and start truly being transparent. All correspondence to the board should be made public unless prohibited by law. So who made the decision?
I would agree.
And what gave you the authority?
In all honesty, I view it as a circumvention of the three-minute rule. If you, and Rich, you've had this discussion, you want to make your case about a certain topic, you've got three minutes to do it. If you can't be concise, then you can circle back to later maybe and finish up on the second part of the topic that you want to talk about. I'm not going to get into a situation where we are reading emails ad nauseam.
But since the Department of Education says you are one of nine.
I understand that, but so, so on advice of the legal counsel, I was told he didn't have to have a vote on that.
He doesn't make decisions either, he's paid for the advice.
Rich, I made a call.
And so you don't say.
So you have three minutes to come up and make your case about any topic that you want to talk about.
So you can just make decisions on.
I've made use of a lot of words, Rich, but yes, based on, based on a discussion with our legal counsel, I don't, didn't have to have a vote on it. We're not required to read the emails, there's no law that says we have to do it. It's not, again, it's not going to get into a thing where we're having half-hour email meetings. You have the opportunity to make your case on any topic they want to, within a three-minute timeframe. That's always been the policy of the board, and that's what we're saying.
Okay, but it's also always been the policy of the board that you vote on things.
Some things.
No.
Some things.
No.
Some things. Shane Koppel will be thirty-nine in time for. I just wanted to agree with what Rich said. I find it appalling that you only won three minutes of our comments. There's only a handful of people that come. I can understand, you made this decision after giving it two, three, four months, that all of a sudden you see multiple, you have five, six, seven, ten emails, and it is becoming a burden. But you only gave it one meeting, and then it stopped. And, you know, with Mr. Volker saying he wants to keep everything in the open, keep the community updated. I would have loved to hear what the email of the sports program was. That person's not even here. So, by all right, we should at least read that one, because they're not here to give their three minutes. So I really do find, at least, I thought it was a great idea. Because one of the things that the board members, current and past, have always complained about is the public's not coming to meetings, they're not involved. And then when you have people that are involved, and you don't like what they say all the time, you want to limit the information that comes out to the rest of the public. So that is not true. So anybody, anybody can stand up here in their three-minute timeframe and say what they want to say. So there's no limit, except for the three-minute. Which is a standard policy that's been in place for years. So it's not like this is something that you have to blue-shake. No, you're, you're, the email and the three-minute is something that you pulled out of the cloud. We didn't pull that. You pulled it out. Well, I was. There was discussion about it. I was going to figure it out in the cloud, but I was going to keep it appropriate. But I do think, when you guys begged, you know, you have these two gentlemen, three gentlemen, that this is their first meeting, that I've seen them at, and it's not going well for these guys. And to look at the board and say, this is our community, this is the board that's making decisions. It doesn't hurt for me, I, Mr. Scott's very good at reading emails.
Yes, he is.
If you could read them a little bit faster, you could probably get them done.
Maybe that's necessary.
One or two minutes, but I do, I, I would wish the board would reconsider that. I don't know if you guys are even given the opportunity to comment if you wanted to limit the emails or if it was just a decision. There was discussion about it. Okay, thank you.
My name is Jelsoft, I'm a good, Bert's Row. Got a couple comments to make, the nineteen eighty-four Chevron case.
When we get to the, when we get to the policy part, then absolutely.
So this is in Title IX?
Nope, not right now, but we'll get to you in a minute.
I'll be.
So where we're, so where we're at right now, this is actually the comment section one, the committee reports that were done. Mr. Martino's comment was in regards to the secretary.
Rich, I'm going first, Joe. Can I, this one?
All right, so are there any other public comments on the committee reports? No, all right, then. Then we're moving down to enrollment. So here is the monthly enrollment comparison, head count statistics, alternative education state totals, monthly alternative education totals by facility. Is there any questions on the board on any of those?
I am still waiting on a breakdown for the Weaver Academy online school.
Okay, so we.
So, yeah, there are numbers that are included, but I don't specifically what you're looking for, so I pulled those specifically. And we have students that we brought back to our virtual academy from external. We're up to fifteen students at this point, the goal being twenty. I mean, there's so many ways you can break this information down, students that were prevented from going out, students that were already part of the virtual academy before, I'm keeping all of that out. Really just specifically looking at students that were brought back to the school district. But I think that's really what we're talking about right?
Yeah.
So we're fifteen, and the goal is twenty at this point.
Twenty new students for the school year.
Twenty students that we brought back from external places.
Yes.
Is that including hybrid or just solely online?
If they're coming back from external, I don't mind if they are blended with our virtual academy, part-time virtual, part-time virtual, as long as they are not external anymore, they're one of our Dan Boone students.
So that's part of the head count?
Yes, yep.
All right, any public comment on the enrollments? All right, moving down to the curriculum instruction committee report, Mrs. Thompson.
We didn't meet last month, but we did work on our annual.
Is the director of curriculum instruction.
That's it.
Yes.
Mr. Carl. And our, if our next meeting is October twenty.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Any public comment on the curriculum instruction committee report? How's the ride going? How's the ride going?
Everyone's been lovely.
Okay, no, the ride, we're opposite each other. Just kidding. All right. Any other public comment? Moving down to the facilities and transportation committee, Mr. Rich.
We met just before this meeting. As you guys see in the finance committee, there were three larger equipment replacements. Luckily, one, the walk-in freezer, gets a separate funding, but they're the traumatic capital. On the E T C project campus-wide, the High Winds today delayed the project to Sunday. Due to a being a weekend, there may be some cost adjustments to that project, but the new expected end date is November twenty-second. And then on the Weaver Town Road building, Jay has worked with Bowman. They have officially submitted a PANDA application, so we are set one of five to get that approval coming to make the adjustments that we have to do. The site.
Yep.
And then the next facilities and transportation committee meeting is November eleventh.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rich. Any other comment on the facilities and transportation committee report? Shane Koppel, thirty-nine in time, right? So phase one is for the sale of the building, right?
That's correct, we had to, due to Amity Township is requiring us to change the egress of the road to the river rock building. And so we have officially submitted the application PANDA to get the approval to change that road.
Okay. A follow-up question is, when you guys decided to sell the building.
when you guys decided to sell the building, uh, you guys did an analysis of how many students were, uh, have left the school district. With these developments coming in, if we sell that building and we need more space for students, are you guys doing an updated analysis before you sell it just to make sure like this is the number of students that we need? Does it have one less building? Or are you guys just gonna?
They actually go to a different place, right?
I know what you're saying. I, I would, I would add to that.
He is asking that if we, with the new developments coming into our communities, we suddenly have additional one hundred students, but our schools will be out of the capacity to house them.
We, we would have to add one to the building. So, the analysis would be, it would be adding on to, um, the PC plus later and IC after that. We did preliminary numbers that costed out to be okay, but we did not pay for an official investigation to come in and do a full analysis of that. If that's something that the board would like us to investigate and potentially allocate funds for, just letting them.
Does that come out of a committee? Does that come out of facilities to request the study?
It should.
Yeah, or that has to be discussed.
So, we just have to introduce a motion during the, or you would, during the committee meeting to, okay.
Or they just have to see the validity of it. Yeah.
The IC is so funny, like, very twelve, perhaps?
No, no, they're full.
Oh, they're full.
Yes.
The IC is.
Awesome. Yeah, awesome, full.
And there's a large tract of land that was, uh, that has just sold not too long ago for a, a development. So, I just want to make sure before you sell a building and then four years later we need to build a building, it's gonna cost ten times more than, at least ten times more than what you would get for the building that you're selling. We're not talking about building, a whole new building. We're talking about addition.
Yeah.
And just, we have done preliminary numbers, you know, long-term. This is more financially prudent for the district, but again, if you want to go down to full analysis, let's discuss the area.
And that, that building's already a money pit.
Correct.
But that building is not a cafeteria, correct?
Uh, it's a cafeteria dormitorium. Yeah, correct. There would be a lot of money we'd have to put in if we were trying to bring students back there.
Can I just say one comment? So, and you know what we're seeing here, per for I posted, the Tiff property, the Tiff properties are over fifty when they're picked. So, are there other?
Well, that's what I was just talking to, the township plan, that's my idea. To try to figure out. I, I think there is another development going in because the housing market is through the roof right now, so.
It's number, it's number fifty-five.
Yep.
Is that the property that's one hundred and twenty acres that in there that aren't, they started working on it?
Leave Creek, yeah.
But it still says for sale, so I guess is that pending or?
No, it's, it's gone through, but it's fifty-five now.
Okay.
So, it's under contract or it's sold?
It's sold.
It's sold.
It's a big area.
Would it be commercial?
Yeah, I'll read that to the townships to see what launch developments come in, so we get some word from the union as well. If there's any other.
Don't worry about Birds Row.
And capacity.
And capacity, no more space. That's Union, that's not Birds Row.
All right. Any other public comment on?
We're getting there. All right, so, uh, next is the finance committee report. Our last meeting, we had a presentation by the food company.
Nutrition group.
Nutrition group. They brought us some samples of menus or tasty, looks like they're doing a good job of presenting lunches and breakfast to the kids. So, that was just a quick, I think fifty or twenty minute presentation that we had that night. And the date of the next finance committee meeting would be October twenty-eighth. Any public comment on the finance committee report? All right. The money you've all been waiting for, the policy review committee, Mr. Scott.
I have nothing to report. So, we had, we just, I'm sorry, that wasn't funny. Uh, anyway, we had a two policies, policy six twenty-two tonight and, and six twenty-four that moved to first reading. And our third policy, which we discussed earlier, Title IX, that also, I believe, Rob, first reading. And that just allows it to come into here.
Yes.
Okay. With that being said, I guess we'll go ahead.
Well, did the committee have any comments before we, I guess, we go to Jimmy?
I, I just had that. Oh, no, Gretchen.
No, sorry about that. What is that?
So, um, what is the timeline for the implementation? Why do we have to implement this draft and we have to have this implemented?
So, the requirement was for policies to be in place on August one, twenty twenty-four. Um, but based on how some of the districts have enacted policies, implement meetings, a lot of districts will have meetings in the summer. So, many districts in the area are generally around the same place that you are. Um, some of them have already enacted their policies, some of them are, did first reading in September, some of them are in first reading in October. But they were technically supposed to be in place by August one, but realistically, how some of the districts operate, that was not possible.
Okay, and now I just have a quick question to go back to. So, um, what is the average amount for a typical litigation, even one that would be of this nature?
So, there's not really an answer to that because it depends on what the facts are behind the claim, what type of claim is brought forth. There are a lot of different variables. Um, depends on what the demand is from, whoever the plaintiff is. Um, it could vary greatly depending on the fact, so I can really get an answer.
One thing I did want to, um, go back to, it does have a little bit of an answer to your question, that, um, you had said that the new Title IX rules for, you know, settling of, of claims and allegations, that there is more of a push for informal agreements, which would lessen, if we follow the new Title IX policies as it stands, that could lessen our political, um, financial load, I guess.
Right, so blatant violations would obviously be more intense.
Yeah, so a formal resolution is for, like, when something actually goes through the Title IX process. And if someone is alleging the violation of Title IX, that's, they would be saying that the district either didn't implement Title IX appropriately or, you know, they could have used the Title IX process and then they believe that the result's incorrect. So, that's separate from, that's what you, that's within the process.
Okay.
But someone is always an option for any type of litigation.
Okay, well, I guess my point of asking that question is you said we get a million dollars from the federal government and does, if we get sued, um, and again, I have to bring up cloud accounting, that this stuff happened, um, you know, that things happen, that, and I know it's not just allegation, that was more of an assault. But we just have to, I, I don't know, we just have to question.
Follow my name. I'm sorry. Um, my understanding is that if we do not, from, put this into our own policy, someone could still sit under the standing Title IX, right? It wouldn't matter if we had it in policy, we could still be liable and end up sued and have to take anything. Is that correct?
I think it was on an individual basis, anybody individually who opposed, everybody correct? So, you made you announce policy, you're asking if this will be sued?
Yeah, if, if the policy, if our policy isn't updated or we don't, we don't update our policy to manage the current Title IX as it stands as of August one, um, someone is still under the Title IX, it's not our policy.
Yes, because the law is that.
If you're kind of the law, how do we land?
Yeah, very, can you talk a little bit about, nor in per session about personal liability for members? There's also liability in the district as well, so someone could sue for members individually. They could also sue the district, and that money can come out of district funding as well, depending on whether insurance covers it or not. Um, but that's just something to think about as well. I know we're talking about one type of liability, but there's also liability for the district as well.
Good question.
I have another question.
Oh, question?
On the very first paragraph of policy number three, it says that the board declares to be the policy official to provide an equal opportunity for all students to achieve their maximum potential through programs and activities offered in the school administration. And then the other stuff. If we enact this, aren't we not giving an equal opportunity to boys and girls in our school district if a member of another sex who identifies as the other team? For example, girls soccer, doesn't a girl lose their spot to a boy and therefore is not given an equal opportunity?
So, one thing to note is that the new regulations do not apply to athletics. There is a specific part about for athletics within the new policy. Um, so there's one thing to note, we're talking about that. Um, and so, did you have another concern about that related to?
My main concern is that the way this is written is saying that we cannot discriminate someone based on this for the one person, but then we are essentially discriminating five hundred other kids who feeds one kid.
Yes.
Correct. So, is, is there a way that this is written that it checks all of the boxes? Because the way it is now is saying we cannot discriminate one child, but we can discriminate five hundred to a thousand other children.
And to Mr. Gretchen's point.
Correct.
To Mr. Gretchen's point, there have been students, national, that have been denied. There have been students, naturally, to Mr. Gretchen's point, that have denied spots on sports teams because the transgender student has taken that spot.
Sure, that's why.
So, that's, I think what he's trying to say is how do we get equity without being discriminatory? You're having reverse discrimination.
So, so for athletics, I think that's why total, this Title IX policy has not taken up athletics. There actually is a proposed regulation for specific to athletics, um, that would apply to all of that. This is, athletics are specifically carved out, um, in the regulations. These regulations do not apply to them. Um, what I think you're talking about is alleged versus discrimination. And, you know, one of the analyses you undertake when you're determining discrimination is whether they are part of a protected class, um, and what type of discrimination, whether a certain conduct is discrimination. So, as far as whether you're discriminating against other students, it's really case by case specific. You know, I think I think you can do an equal protection analysis with you, but, um, there is current case law that, um, if you're familiar with the Dover, the Boyer Town, where there were students who allege that cisgender students, which are pursuant to our, you know, sex, gender, sex of birth, were claiming they had a privacy right against having transgender girls in their bathroom in Dover's first Boyer Town, which is case law and that applies in this district. Um, and what the court said in Dover's, where, the Boyer Town, was that it was not discrimination, um, was not, or was not a violation of their privacy right. Um, it did not go as far as to be the reverse, um, saying it was discrimination against, if they were prohibiting the transgender girls from using that bathroom without view discrimination, but they did, they were not able to show the cisgender girls that there was violation of their privacy right. Because what they're looking at, they're looking at discrimination in the way that you're talking about is there has to be a, um, I want to use a language correctly, so let me just pull it up for you. There is a, when it comes to transgender students, there are different standards when you're looking at discrimination. And it's well established that that standard is something called quasi-gate school. Make sure I have the language right. It's highly the remediable scrutiny. So, what that means, in order to have a policy like that, um, you would need an exceedingly persuasive justification for the action. Um, like I said, it must be a genuine, not hypothesized, it must not rely on liberal generalizations about different counts, capacities, preferences of males and females. So, when you're talking about what the concerns that you are, it's a really, it's a case by case system basis. And if someone is looking at that from the outside, that's what the analysis would have to be in order to, um, implement a policy like that, and the district would have to have. That said, discrimination for these employers stands are related to sufficiently important government interest, and that's all in the oldies. But it's essentially kind of the bill worth of the standard, it cannot be based on these generalizations.
So, in the Boyer Town case that you cited, was there an attempt by the cisgender students' parents to present a counter suit based on the privacy issue?
So, they're the ones who filed suit on the privacy issue.
Okay.
Yes.
So, when, but when they lost, was there an appeal?
Yes, it appealed to the Third Circuit. So, the court, so Eastern District of Pennsylvania is that this is the federal court that is this jurisdiction, also Boyer Town jurisdiction. It was appealed then to the Third Circuit, which is the level under the Supreme Court, but before the Supreme Court. Um, and that's the Third Circuit, is the court that said it was not a violation of the student's privacy interest to have transgender students in the bathrooms and offices.
And I'm just trying to follow the process. So, was there an appeal of that Third Circuit to the Supreme Court or did they just fight it off?
No, it stopped at the Third Circuit. There is no, um, there hasn't been any actual Supreme Court law that's come forth yet saying.
And this is the state Supreme Court?
No, that would have been the, if they had appealed, yes.
Did it refuse to take it up?
I don't, I can't remember whether that went up or not. Um, there's another case group that you may be thinking of in another circuit where they refused to. Um, but I can't recall whether it was appealed to the Supreme Court, but I know that Supreme Court did not take it. So, that stopped at our port of appeals in the Third Circuit, which is Pennsylvania and New Jersey.
I have more question. Um, so the definition of discrimination is discrimination challenged to treat individuals differently, which that's extremely broad, or to harass or victimize based on a protected class classification, including race, color, age, creed, religion, sex, sexual orientation, ancestry, national origin, marital status, identity, or handicapped disability. This is the, I'm so, this is sorry, Code one oh three, I'm sorry, page four. So, when it says treat individuals differently, that obviously is a very broad statement. And that, my, my issue is, is when the definitions are extremely vague, it can be massaged to mean anything, absolutely anything. Can you clarify the correct terminology of what being treated differently looks like?
So, you're asking about under Title IX or under your general?
Well, the Title IX said to, to refer to this, this definition of discrimination.
Sure.
So, can you interpret what treating differently looks like?
Sure, so under Title IX, there's two types of, there are discrimination. There's sex discrimination generally, which is the scope includes some of those protected categories that's an issue. And that's the, under the definitions is, I believe, under, I don't know.
It just says individuals, um, treat individuals differently.
Yeah, and so, there are two types of the way that the scope of sex discrimination works. So, there's sex discrimination and there's sex harassment under Title IX. So, when you're looking at sex discrimination, that is, you know, treating someone differently based on their protected class. And generally what's followed when you're looking at discrimination is following what, what the federal law standards are for discrimination. So, that would depend on, um, what the concerns are, what the facts are of whatever the case is. When you're talking about sex-based harassment, which is a, a form of sex discrimination under Title IX, that's one that has this really explicit definition, um, these three types of sex-based harassment, um, in Title IX, where that's put for co-harassment, hostile environment harassment, and sexual assault. Are probably as much as listed as someone that enumerated, um, criminal offenses like sex, sex assault, dating violence, domestic violence. So.
So, if my child, let's say, is playing a sport and there's a transgender child on the other side and my child says, you know, I'm not necessarily comfortable playing against this team. I'll forfeit my match and sit down. Is that treating an individual differently? And a basis of harassment or discrimination?
They could, a complaint can always be filed as to what's Title IX discrimination or harassment and what really depends on.
Determines that it's valid.
The Title IX coordinator determines whether it's.
And our coordinator's brought flowers.
Yes. So, what happens when a complaint comes in is the Title IX coordinator looks at what the complaint is, looks at whether it falls under Title IX or whether it more probably falls under one of your other one of three policies or whether it probably really. falls under one of your other 103 policies, or whether it per really falls under the code of conduct and should be addressed that way.
So does the Title IX coordinator reach out to the solicitor to confirm the legalities, like the legalities between the complaints? I'm asking all these questions because what happens is, is we are trying to protect all students, and unfortunately, I don't know if you ever noticed, the Pacific Ocean and the Atlantic Ocean cannot cross, they're completely different. We're talking about two bases of morality that we're trying to merge. If you go down the center of the Pacific Ocean, the Atlantic Ocean, you try merging those waters, those waters will split, oil and water will split because there's no way to merge. So we're talking about two different types of moralities, what people consider this is moral, if people consider this is moral. And we're trying to find a happy ground, but unfortunately, one person or one class of people are going to have to forfeit their own personal convictions for the sake of the other, or vice versa. And I think that's where the challenge is, where we can't get the actual definitions. And it may not happen next week, it may not happen next month, it may happen five years down the road, but unfortunately, there are ethical, fortunately, there's ethical people who would take this and handle it ethically, and then there's unethical people who will abuse this. And we've seen multiple cases across the United States when that happens. And my concern is, is we are setting ourselves up for a financial and legal mess. And to then tell the board that you have to comply or else, I think is absolutely criminal. And I think --
That's right. No.
She's right. I think, I think it's criminal to do that. Me personally, I have a personal conviction to mislead a child in any way. I'm going to be personally be held accountable. So for me, I would rather side on the judgment of God and have the world come at me than stand with the world and have God judge me. Sometimes to protect all children, because not all children understand that sometimes what they want is not necessarily safe, and as adults, we have to be able to tell them no, or maybe now is not the time, or wait, or yes. You know, as adults and as school board directors, as teachers, as administration, we have to protect all children. I don't think, me personally, that this policy even protects the trans child, to be honest with you. I think it sets them up even worse. And I, if I vote yes for this, that, that child, if that child ever, any child for that matter, is impacted, I'm held responsible. Maybe the law of the land may not hold me responsible, but for me, God will hold me accountable, and I can't stand for that, unfortunately. And I think we need to come to an understanding that our previous policy under discrimination covered all people, including gender. If you're a human being and breathing in this district, it covers all people. I don't think we have to adapt this if we don't want to. And I'm only going to speak for myself, but if someone wants to come at me legally because I don't agree to pass, because I don't believe in safety for all children, then that's the cross I have to bear. But that's just my personal opinion, and I think that's where our issue is. And it's not because I don't want any child to stay back here, it's the complete opposite, it's protect all.
Truth, nobody says that.
So to answer your question, the thing I want to note is that regardless of whether this Title IX policy gets enacted, it's still not permissible under Pennsylvania state law to discriminate against students on the basis of sex regardless, and that includes things like gender identity, sex stereotypes. So the PHRI still protects those students for discrimination. So what this is, it's two different procedures is really what it looks like, because the protections are the same. If you look at your Policy 103, the standard for discrimination is very similar to what the Title IX standard for sex, for harassment, discriminatory harassment under Title Policy 103. Your definition is very similar to what the Title IX sex-based harassment is. So really what you're looking at, the same protections are required as far as who they protect, as far in Title IX and in the Pennsylvania state law, but you're looking at what the procedures are. So there are different procedures required under Title IX, but you're still required as a district to protect students against discrimination based on sex for those same categories. There are actually more categories included in the PHRI than there are in Title IX. So what you're actually looking at is different procedures depending on what the conduct falls under, but it's still the same prohibition against --
But our policy covers more than just students. So when I looked at the policy for the PIA that Suits provided, their policy says where a student's gender is questioned or uncertain, the decision of the principal as student's gender will be accepted by PIA. I would be more comfortable that if our policy was strictly related to students and not free for all for anybody, because as you understand, as a district, we have after-school activities that our children can be, unfortunately, I mean, any child, it doesn't mean a cisgender child or not cisgender, trans child, I mean, every child can be impacted by that. I personally feel like them specifying where that gender is classified by, approved by the principal, I would recommend, say, doctor, parent, and principal confirm, and, and we honor that within the district, other than allowing just anybody who's a spectator to come in and then be covered under a policy. That's just my issue, because of the safety, that's safety issue. Know what I mean?
Sure. Do you have a bit to the question?
No, I'm just saying, is it possible that we can add specifics like that where it's for student body, not just anybody that steps within the district? Or is that direct violation of what's coming down from the federal government?
Sure, that would mean the district and certainly the board in that policy is, you know, whatever they want to enact policies on, as long as it's in, you know, with furthering the district and the student access community, but yes, that would be in contradiction of what the requirements are under 2024.
And they're both specific in the Atlantic Ocean where they cannot come together, it's two bases around, I appreciate your explanation.
So you said that would be in contradiction.
In what? So just a little late in the --
Can I just ask one question? Because I'm not speaking for Val, but Val, you're asking, you accept the state policy, that's, that's why I described it, how the state is, but you're concerned about Title IX, and we're covered by both, we're not, we still have to adhere to both.
That's why I don't understand why the federal government's saying we have to update Title IX if the original policy covered all people. But when she said that this is not specific to sports, I don't know, this says, it actually says education program or activity, is a sport not an activity?
So it's not specific to clubs? It's not specific to who's participating on a team in athletics, that's the part bound that is, so for example, there could be harassment or discrimination that's happening, you know, on their game, their practices, whatever, but that, they don't explicitly talk about who can participate on the athletic teams, that's the one that's up for a proposed comment at the current time. Is there a question?
No, but you said that sports is kind of, they're working on that policy.
Possibly.
Possibly.
They are working on it, I don't know.
But I'm not, I'm not --
This is not for sports, it's for like clubs and like those types of activities.
Right, she said it's not for sports.
And I can't, you know, I can't put myself in the shoes of why they decided to enact regulations the way they did, other than what they explained in the preamble, but Pennsylvania does have protected laws on sex discrimination, many states, as you know, do not, and so we're talking about --
Well, I find very interesting if they, if they're so composed about discrimination, then, then sports should have just been in here. They're contradicting themselves, yet they're telling us that if we don't pass this policy or else we're going to do, we're holding funding back. No one's holding funding back from them, holding it back for activities, or in the process of discussing it, you know what I'm saying? Like, that's just a contradiction. I think it's like a bullying tactic to get everyone, no one knows what, what's going to happen, because every school should comply, because every solicitor said, do or else.
Truth.
And everyone's afraid of being sued, that's what happened with this district when it came to Mass Mandate.
Truth.
It was do or else, you individually could be sued. And I think it's criminal.
All right, public comment, please. It's been thirty-one minutes. People have jobs.
Does anybody else have any questions on the board?
When?
Okay. Public comment.
I want to go first. You know I've been coming to the board since they stole the 2020 election and the recent pandemic? I know how the board works. They want the district, you know, they, well, they say they, I'll turn my job down in four days. They put out agendas on Friday, okay? Nobody knows what's going on in the community at all. I never knew what's going on in the community, and I never would know what's going on unless you attend every single board meeting, I mean, everyone. Sometimes you hear what's going on, you know what's going on, like, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, are they bringing this stuff in? Yeah, and then you know, this is why I've been coming, now they're finally bringing it to the school district. 2020, DEI or whatever with, whatever, but it mattered, it was all about that stuff, diversity, equity, inclusion, and jam thing. No, we're not doing it, then they're doing it. So they don't tell the parents what's going on, okay? For the record, I mentioned weeks ago, and this was brought up, that the schools should email parents and let them know exactly what was going on to the community. I said, tell the parents what's going on, and let them come and raise a stick about it. Most parents had no clue, and people didn't even believe it. So that's why I, I was the one who told the person to reach out a Facebook, to put a thing out, and ask my parents for security, because people didn't know what was going on. Number, one other thing I want to put in, that the Department of Education needs to be abolished, okay? Title IX is fear porn, that the school district has changed their policies to follow gender ideology, to dictate rules and regulations, which allows people who identify. Okay, let's talk about laws, okay? Who makes these laws? Okay? People we elect, correct? That's who makes the laws, people that we elect. Do we, the people, really want these types of laws being passed? I don't believe for one second that people we elect are actually creating the laws that we, the people, want. That's all I had to say.
Justin Holgerich, Burgesboro, wanted to comment on the Chevron laws. The Chevron law basically states that it's for the government to defer to a different agency when there's something ambiguous. There's nothing ambiguous about sex, XX and XY, you're either a male or a female. I personally attended this school. I have a twelve-year-old son that attends this school, I have a sixth-year-old student that attends a middle school, I have a sixteen-year-old brother that attends this school. I have been here longer than you have, no disrespect intended on that, but we've gone through some things that you've mentioned before, the litter boxes in the bathrooms, this shit is crazy. We have a thirty-four percent reading proficiency in this district out of three thousand kids. Why are we standing here talking about this? What is the point of this? A fifty-eight percent for math? You should be embarrassed, every last one of you, that we are sitting here over four hundred thousand dollars' worth of money. There's nothing ambiguous about XX and XY. The Loberd, it, as you mentioned, it brings it back, there's nothing ambiguous about sex. You were born a male or a female. What gives? What are you scared of? My wrestling coach was a parent legionaire. He told me to be the change you want to see. I stand here, I can't speak for everybody behind me, I will fight tooth and nail on this. I will be here every single week from now on, you will have to hear the same speech for me every single week until something changes. Yous are the ones that are responsible for it, do not be scared. Stand up for what is right.
The public's going to know.
You mentioned the Atlantic and the Pacific. It's not even that. You have the Atlantic Ocean and Monocacy Creek, this is four students, and yous are sitting here like cowards, every last one of you, every last one of you, no disrespect, but stand up if you, if, I understand where you're coming from, you know it's wrong, don't vote for it.
Oh, I won't.
You know it's wrong, any other one of you that know that it's wrong, and you would still do it because it's good for the district, it's not. You're pushing people away. And that's the bottom line. Educate, stay out of our personal lives, that's what you should be worried about. And with the actual numbers that we have, you should be embarrassed. Spend more time on educating, less time on teaching our kids what sexes there are. That's it.
My name's Salim Lenu, Burgesboro, and that was my oldest son that just spoke to all of you. He's talking about his younger brother, which is my fifteen-year-old that goes to this building, is in tenth grade. Tonight is the first that I've even heard that your four transgender students in the district and three of them are even in high school. But y'all can email me, you have a thing called Safe to Say in the building. Six days last year, eleven times, I was called to this high school over unfounded garbage. I was pulled out of work, I lost money. My son was searched by your security, he can vouch because I saw him more than I saw my own dad last year. But you can't notify me about what's going on around my child. So what you're telling me is that we as parents don't matter. And what you're telling me is, is that one percent means more than all the other students in this whole district. So now you're putting my son in a position, my grandson in a position, and all of these other students in the district. And Mr. Volker, I don't like to call people out, and I, if there's one thing that my son will tell you, I can't stand a liar. You stood here, sat here tonight and said the bathrooms are monitored. Do me a favor, bring Mr. Berger and Mr. Solz in here, and ask them what happened two weeks ago with my son and five other students. You tell me that you do a good job monitoring? Well, if that's the case, then why did I waste a six-to-two shift and a two-to-ten shift sitting here trying to straighten out problems that went on in the boys' bathroom? You know how they found out about it? A student in one of the stalls. That was a great job on this school. You guys really need to be ashamed of your damn selves.
I do have a student in the district, small child, not in middle school, primary. I don't need to release my name, it's none of your business, but --
You do need your lead name.
My name is Steve, that's it. I agree with you, thank you. You're the voice we need on the board. Mr. Hurley, I remember you from when I was in school, I'm not sure if you remember me, but it's nice to see you again. Anyway, this is a ridiculous issue. This shouldn't, you shouldn't fear over four hundred thousand dollars versus a million dollars. It's a million dollars, and you're giving up your morals, and you're giving up your word to God over a million dollars. It's, it's not that much money, it's really not. You break it in half, you got half a million. That's a decent house in the suburbs these days. A million dollars, and you're willing to take all of these parents, all of their students, you're willing to let every one of them pull their kids out of this school district?
My kids are already --
His are already out. He did it today. Over a million dollars, you're, you're going to lose your federal funding, not only are you going to lose that million, all the lawsuits that are about to come your way, because this was held from the public, and we all know it was, this meeting was an agenda item and nothing else, there was no details, she knows that because she sat here, read it while, after I said it. And then, you're willing to literally let all that happen? Do you know how much money you're going to lose in lawsuits? This district's going to go under. Every kid is not going to have schooling in this district, over a million dollars. Get it together. You're a joke, all of you. This is ridiculous. They are males and females and nothing else. You're, you're going to sit here and tell me that a forty-year-old man can go in a bathroom with a fifteen-year-old girl, or vice versa? Are you telling me that? That's what she said, she said that, she's a lawyer, and she said it, it came out of her mouth. She, tell me you didn't say that. Don't, you're a lawyer, don't lie, tell me you didn't say that.
Listen, listen, there are regulations, there's policy, and then there's procedure, right? The policy is written that way, how we enact the policy, that's up to the administrative team. So if there's a situation where, let's, let's use an after-school activity, right? Let's say there's musical practice, and if somebody comes in, we would not be allowing a forty-year-old person that's going to identify as transgender without any prior communication to the school district, and just say, I'm going to come in and use that bathroom. It wouldn't work that.
But you, but you just --
Whether or not they did or not, do you think us as fathers are going to stand by and let that happen?
And you literally just said that.
You're out of your mind.
Early on, you said that. Answer my question, we want, it's a yes or no question. I'm looking at you.
Hold on, I have to say something.
She's legal.
Let's have some order, let's have some order.
We are, we just want the answer. It's a yes or no question.
To the policy or procedure?
You're wasting his three minutes, it's a yes or no answer.
Forty-year-old man, after-school activity, she covered that. She said, you're a lawyer, legal.
And I'll let her respond, but I --
Well, you're not, because she's not responding.
As a yes or no, you're wasting your time.
Please, please.
No adversary.
Yeah, again, I know you guys scoff at this, but I do --
They're children.
I have three.
Okay, you should understand, thanks, cool. Anyway, doesn't -- Anyway, doesn't matter. Please answer my questions, yes or no?
We're talking about a forty-year-old, is that person covered as, as a protected class? If they're transgender, that's what the policy is saying, yes. When it comes to procedure, would we allow it to happen? No.
No, which is not allowed.
You literally, then he doesn't cost a million dollars, just...
No.
I want you to answer my question.
Use the bathroom and then allow them to use the bathroom?
Just like what happened.
It's a yes or no question, answer the question.
I don't have hours to wait.
Okay, then I'll, I'll move from you, please, and I would like her answer. Mrs. Lawyer, please answer my yes or no question.
I'm not sure if that's a question to be answered.
Oh my god.
After-school activities, that was, under Title Nine. The question was, would a forty-year-old, whoever identifies as whoever, be able to follow a ten, fifteen, twenty, whatever, year-old little girl into a bathroom? You said it earlier, and we all listened very carefully. You said they are all covered under extracurricular activities. Am I wrong, or am I correct?
That's what Mr. Volker just said, he's correct, they are, they are protected classes.
Okay, so, so the answer is yes.
So those are protected classes, but forget about us.
You're not understanding.
It's, it's, what do you mean? It's a yes or no question, you're, you're, you're teachers!
The ten-year-old girl should be the protected class.
What Mr. Volker is trying to explain is that whether that person consented, if that person was prohibited from using the bathroom, then they could file, at least I don't have a claim for such discrimination. What Mr. Volker is saying is that in that sense, chances are they could handle that differently, and it would, he would not just allow a person...
But you're discriminating that person, so you're not...
Before it happens.
It shouldn't even be allowed.
It's a yes or no question, just answer it.
No, listen, and that's the challenge, it's not black and white, but it's not the end of the world. There are ways to joke.
This is a joke.
You guys are gonna get sued out the ass. Every one of you are gonna lose your jobs, I guarantee it.
We're, we're unpaid.
I don't care.
We're not paid.
I don't care.
We're volunteers, we have kids in the district, we're simply here out of goodwill.
It's a shame.
We work full-time.
Be intelligent, use your head.
Yes.
It's a shame.
Yes.
I really feel bad for you guys. I've been planning a commission for ten years in my town, I've taken a lot of meetings like this. I really feel bad for you right now. I do. This should not be happening. There are men, and there are women, that's it.
Hi, Jennifer Leoni, one eleven Juniper. Um, so I know you just said that... It says it in here under the designation of authority that the board directs the superintendent, so you all are giving all the authority to the superintendent or designate to develop administrative regulations or rules to implement this policy. Does that come back to the board? Do they have to approve that, or is it just whatever the administration wants?
Good point. So administrative guidelines, and certain regulations, and certain technology, is something that the administrative team is tasked with developing to uphold the policy. The board sees the policy, the guidelines don't usually come back to the board.
So, so the board approves this, and then they, they basically are approving whatever the administration wants them to do?
They say, Thomas, it's a policy, please implement the policy properly.
So the administration has to choose whatever they want to do with it?
In accordance with the policy. As long as we pass the policy. That's the difference.
That's what I'm saying. If the policy is passed, the administration...
Jen, you remember this from being on the board, it's exactly what it is if we just go through the...
In this situation, Bucky, it's a little bit more important than some other policies that they passed.
Okay.
So I'm asking the question so that everybody here knows the answer to it. I was on the board, you're correct. And so I'm standing up here, still standing for my community, because they deserve a voice too. So I'm asking a question that may, they might not ask because of the wording of this. So that they get an answer. Does that make sense?
I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I mean, if we approve the policy, the mass instruction we give to the administration. We have not approved this, this is still being discussed, but yes, you understand that, because we, you've been on the board, you understand that... You understand that there are policies that get approved by us, then we give direction to the administration.
I am understanding, I'm making sure they...
I know, I'm not, I'm not...
So that's why I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate it, thank you.
Judy Levis, two twelve Hopewell Street. Um, I can stand here and attest that policy and procedure are the same thing. My daughter broke her foot, uh, two days before the end of last school year. Uh, she is a junior at the high school, and she has to walk one point one miles from Hopewell Street to get to school every day. I, first day of school, I came in and I asked for transportation for her, and they told me no. It was the school's policy that they would not give her transportation, even though she's handicapped. I have a handicapped hand tag. The state even said she was handicapped, and you know how hard it is to get a handicapped hand tag. She was handicapped. They told me the policy was she has to be handicapped for six months or more. We all know that they have this program going on right now where, "Get your kids to school, get your kids to school." I asked them for help to get her to school. They would not do it, because she will not be handicapped for six months of this year, even though she'll be handicapped for six months in total. And the only solution they would give me was to make her go hybrid. And now, even though when she was, um, when we had, when we had the COVID, and she was failing when she stayed at home, I was forced to make her go hybrid, because I didn't have a way to get her to school every day. Just so you know.
Could use some more funding for that.
Anna Peterson, Ludenville. This is my first time here, and I will attest to the fact that I would not have known that this subject was even happening if it wasn't for other people in the community speaking. Just as others have said, there should be emails going out. And once again, last year and the year before that, Rob Flowers would send email after email after email, where I was getting bombed on my phone with emails over things. Why is it that something this important doesn't get thrown out to the community?
Truth.
So that's one. Two. Yes, I do believe that there is female and there is male. But if we want to be in this new world that there are other choices, then let's start thinking about saving both sides, or the safety of both sides.
Truth.
If, let's start with a female transgender who wants to go into a male bathroom, who's protecting her or he with other males in that bathroom? Same thing in the opposite direction. A male who's now saying he's a female going into a twelve-year-old bathroom in the middle school. And they're teenagers, they change their minds easily. And how do I know that? I know children who have declared themselves at ten, eleven, and twelve as being lesbians. And they're lesbians with girlfriends for two months, and then all of a sudden saying, "Oh no, I am now dating a boy." So that is what happens to teenagers. So we are saying, sure, this person is a male, sure, he can go, he, I mean, this person is a female, sure, he can go into a room with, with my daughter. What happened to females, biological females, being protected in this country? Because I don't feel that they're being protected under anything.
Truth.
So I am sending my twelve-year-old into the middle school for six, seven hours, and I have no idea if she's safe. And that is your job, to keep our children safe while they're in your school. We pay our taxes, we own our, our homes, we are sending our children to a public school to be educated, not to be told that they are male, female, lesbian, gay. Those are things for the outside world.
Truth.
That is not something that should be taught in stuff. So I would like to see a change, that we do not go towards what the rest of this, um, country is going to. And to what some of the parents said, you guys do not know what's happening in the bathrooms. I have more than one child that has a test and has shown, has told me that there are things going on in these bathrooms in the middle school that you guys have nothing, don't even know. My child is exposed to walking into a bathroom and watching two girls kissing each other. And your teachers don't even know it, and that goes on every single day. So nobody is monitoring those bathrooms. So if they're not monitoring the bathrooms now, if you guys do the policy that all of a sudden a biological male can go into a room with our ten, eleven, and twelve-year-olds, how do we know nothing's gonna happen? Because there could be those that say that they are transgender, but they're just pretending to be. There are those who could be, but there are those that might not be. It has happened in this country where children have gotten hurt in their correct bathrooms because we have accepted this policy group. So I need this board to seriously think about the safety of all of our children, not about the one percent that might need us. So here's another solution. You guys use our taxes. Why is it that you can't build another bathroom, or you can designate a bathroom for those few that say that they're transgender? Why is it that they need to use our bathrooms?
I think that's just an important legal thing to review, which, fair, fair question, right? So we actually have single-stall bathrooms here at the high school. But legally, we can't force them to use them. We do work with the families, as I mentioned earlier, very well. And things are going well across the board, right? I understand the sensitivity of this issue, but we're talking really about two students that we have, right? I have no legal ground to stand on and say you must use that single-stall bathroom. By all means, feel free to ask if you're coming up with a...
So before the lawyer speaks, explain to me why, through time, up until this moment, a boy hasn't been able to go into a girl's bathroom, and a girl is not able to go into a boy's bathroom, up until this point? So obviously, you do have the legal right to say, "I can't go in that room," and you can't go to that room. So why is it...
And that's right, and that's what's right, you can't just, one day, as, as a boy, let's say, me, and start going into the girl's bathroom, just because I feel like it, it does not work that way.
Right.
The way that works is we end up having conversations with the families to develop some type of game plan. And almost always, it ends up being a nurse's room or a single-stall bathroom that we're able to use. Almost always.
So you're telling me that if this policy passes, and a transgender boy can go into a female bathroom, you guys are clearing that bathroom every single time? Is that what you're implying?
No, that's not what I'm saying, and I'm also saying that it doesn't matter if this policy passes or not, the law is what states that that is legal, right? This policy, I, I tried to articulate earlier, it's more based on procedure. The law is already set and has been in place for years, well, before I came to be superintendent here at Dandy Room. That is the law, and that's been a practice within the organization. And I, I, I dare say, almost everybody in this room, their kids have not had an issue, because we work with the families through these challenging situations.
So are you saying that it's not a policy right now? I know for a fact that in, in the middle school, a transgender can't just walk into the opposite sex.
Right, there has to be a conversation with the administrative team.
Okay. But the point being is that up until now, you have had biological bathrooms.
Which still do.
Right, exactly. So the point is, don't change that. Because why? If the person has, they can mentally think that they're the other sex. That is something for their families to work with and for their community to work with. But, and fine, outside of, uh, uh, outside of the school or school activities, but they are still physically male. They are still physically male, until the moment that those hormones are, are no longer male, and that those body parts are no longer male, then that's a different conversation. But they are teenagers, and they are still in the same body that they were born in. So how can you tell me that my child will be safe because someone who's another gender is walking into that, into that bathroom? You're saying that you will work with the community, that you will work with the parents, but how is that happening if you guys decide that legally you need to do this? So you're not working with the community, and you're not working with us. Because the majority of parents will be against this. But the fact that you didn't tell the community, how are they here and not reading emails? How are they for their, their, their word out with us? How, how is that happening when the word is not out to the community? And when all we're doing is just because of a few transgender, which, again, that has to do with their families. But it is now hurting our family, and it is now hurting our children. So you guys have to really think this out, because the community is not becoming... Thank you.
We're not changing anything.
Right, you just reiterate, we are not changing anything. The practice of the Dandy Boon School District that has been in place for approximately six years, and some of this legislation has somehow, is not fundamentally changing. It's about how we report, research, and the outcomes, and, and support. That, that is the biggest fundamental shift.
We aren't changing the...
You did say that, you did, you, you did say that in order by law, that, that's what you're...
Correct, correct, that has been operated.
So what do you mean it's not changing? This, this isn't my three-minute lecture talk, and I hope, I'm not trying to, I didn't...
That's okay.
Introduce myself, even though I know my amendments, and I don't have to legally, you know, because I'm in a public place, but...
That's the board policy, but that's okay.
It's okay, I don't have, I don't, I came in here publicly, I don't have to introduce myself to everybody. I'm not in any legal issues or anything, you're in trouble.
Except to arrest if you want to follow policy.
And especially to, I'm not gonna introduce myself to a bunch of...
So, so, just so we're clear, no, that, so, so we are clear. The policy you worry is that you want to introduce yourself and identify yourself as either a resident.
I am a resident.
And where do you reside?
I live a couple blocks away, I live a couple blocks away.
What's your name and where do you reside?
I'm not gonna need my address, so other people just introduce themselves, I live...
The policy you worry is if you're gonna speak, you introduce yourself and where do you reside.
My name's John Doe, I live on Walnut Street, right here in Burgesboro.
Thanks, John.
Yep. And, uh, so I just want to say, uh, one thing. Uh, I have a four and a six-year-old. How, like, outside of here, like, how, how am I gonna explain that to my kids? Like, I, I, as a, as a parent, like, I don't want my kids to know that. Like, who, who's the ones being discriminated here? I, we are. You're, you're talking about a few people, like, when we're the ones being discriminated. Like, what about the people who don't have those, those same beliefs? Like, if it's only a few people, then, then why aren't they being homeschooled? I gotta pull my kids out to be homeschooled because of these sickos? Like, that's not fair, you know, I, I don't want my kids being subjected.
Just keep in mind, and I tried to say this earlier, we're talking about our students here, and I'm not okay with referring to them as sickos.
I'm sorry, but I mean, I do, I...
That's fine, every person...
I apologize, I, I apologize, but to me, they need...
It's fine.
I, that's just, I, I freedom of speech, I feel...
That's okay, but I think you have to also understand, superintendent, it's my responsibility to take care of all of our students, every single one. And I want every single student to feel as though they belong here, that's a fundamental core belief, and I need them to understand that we do not believe they are sickos.
We're the parents, not the students, so, so I'm not, I don't know where you're going with that.
This is a public meeting, sir, everybody can do it.
It's being recorded, and you're responsible for the safety of all students, that's correct.
That's fine, but when I, when I drop my, I am responsible for my kid's safety at home.
Yep.
When I drop them off to school, I'm leaving it in, they're in Boone District's hands. I'm, 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 it's, it's pretty sad that, I only came in here tonight, and I, and I am gonna get this message out there, and, uh, and that you weren't, I, I'm already posting, I'm gonna do whatever I can. It's pretty sad that you guys are gonna tell me what my kid has for lunch, but you can't even tell me about something this serious about having my kids share the same bathroom with a different sex, when my kids shouldn't even be learning about sex at six and four. That's pretty pathetic in my eyes. At six and four, they should not know nothing of that, and nothing of that nature. They shouldn't have to know different bathrooms, this and that. They know that they go into the little boy's room, and they go into the little girl's, and she, my daughter goes into the little girl's room. And you should not have that in the young, I could see if you get, if, if older or out in the real world, out in the world, but not in, in schools, I find it completely absurd. And, and my kids will be homeschooled, and, and I'm gonna get my message out to as many people as I can about what you guys are doing and why you guys won't reach out to us about the emails, when you can tell me what my kid has for lunch, but you can't tell me about a meeting like this. And I had to find out through a third party just to, just to make it here tonight. I didn't find... And I had to find out through a third party, just to, just to make it here tonight. I didn't find out till today. I get all the, all the emails, and I got an email from my wife at ten o'clock this, this morning about what's going on today through a family member that's here tonight. And I wouldn't even knew about it tonight if it wasn't for that. But he doesn't wanna send out so many emails, but he can send out that they're having carrots and chicken or whatever for lunch, but you can't send out something this important, 'cause he didn't want us to know. And I don't wanna get into too much other stuff, 'cause I, I'm already a little irritated, and I don't wanna say stuff I don't mean. I didn't mean to offend anybody, that's just my opinion. I, I have, I have gay, I do have gay friends and, and stuff. I have nothing against any, any, any of that kinda stuff. But I do have a problem with, that it, it should be a men's room, and, uh, little, or, look, sorry, I have kids. Little boys' room, little girls' room, end of story. Like, anything other than that, that's just absurd. Like, and you guys, are you guys accepting, like, the furries and this and that?
No.
Like, uh, uh, no, but I've seen them. I've, I've, I've seen, I've seen...
There's no need to litter boxes, no.
I didn't say anything about litter boxes.
Someone else did.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I didn't say it. I just, there are furries here. And I've seen them. I, I have seen them. I live a block away. And I've seen them with the, the little, and the little tails and everything, so it is happening, you guys. I don't know about the litter box. I didn't say she put that in her mouth, I didn't say that. But I did hear about that, but I'm glad we cleared that up, that you guys don't have litter boxes here. I'm, all right, I'm glad that we cleared that up, because I, I thought that you guys did, because I, I, I really did, and I, I knew, I, I didn't, I knew my kids weren't gonna come here be, because I thought of that, but I'm glad we cleared that up. But you can't tell me you guys don't have furries here, and other people that, that identify as other things and stuff, and whatever, but look at the small majority of, of, of people you have, and look at all, and the other larger majority of all the other people that are disagreeing with these other people. That's, like, look at the big difference here. It's like, it's like slim to none. Like, you guys are being, like, you guys are totally disagreed with by so many more people than a few people that go to school here. Then they should be, if they feel that they're, then they should be home, they should be homeschooled. We shouldn't have to be pulling our kids...
We haven't made it to the...
But nobody here agreed with the policy.
Just the fact that it's brought up on campus, and that, that's not my three minutes. You've got your time.
You don't have all over well...
Yeah, you're pretty well paid for three minutes.
The federal government sent us this policy. We've been mulling over it for the last month to figure out how we can word it in a way that every student is protected, and none of us face a lawsuit for, uh, for other side. It's a tough situation to be in, but nobody's supporting any case you guys are talking about.
How are they not protected, though? Like, how, like, no, like, just because they offer their feelings, they feel discriminated?
Like, that's like a bigger issue.
Like, is, is it, this is what, discrimination offers feelings?
As far as I go there, you just don't want any teacher or anybody, period, to make fun of a student because they wear a furry costume, or they advertise a different shirt. We, we're here to educate every single student. We have to make sure they all feel safe here. We're trying to advocate that.
If all these other parents don't feel safe with these, with the people around that are acting like...
But we can't turn any student away. We're a public school. We have to...
You're turning, you're gonna be turning a lot of students away.
Well, that's your choice.
It is my choice, and my kids are gonna be homeschooled, and, and that's bad.
But four and six, I, I have four kids with this, and four and six are not taught about sex, and they're not taught about, uh, which bathroom is...
Well, if you go, I'm just saying, I, I, just, just even being brought up, I don't even wanna be any part of it. I'd rather my kids be homeschooled and taught the right way, so, that's what I gotta say.
Just so everybody knows, just so everybody knows, um, it's word policy that people in the community speak. So when we're asking for your name and, and where you live, it's just purely that we follow those rules, not that we're trying to be personal and invading privacy. I just wanna clarify that. So you can say what, um, you a township you are, you don't have to necessarily give your address. Just say it.
I, yeah, I understand that, but we could all, I didn't even give you my real name, I'm not sure.
Back to the people in here.
Yeah, we're clear on that.
You didn't fool me on that, John. I hate to tell you.
Right. Listen, anyone get here, say anything, like, I got my license.
It's called the honor system. We expect you to be on your honor.
Hey, John, John, John Doe. One other thing would be that, it's just simply knowing where you live. You have, those people who speak here are in our community. That's, they can't be living in King of Cretia and coming up here, and that's, that's the whole reason.
I didn't lie about living on that.
I'm just saying, that's why that policy's there.
There we go. My name is John Walson. I live in Douglasville. There's a famous line from a movie that says, "What we have here is a lack of communication." All of you have probably seen that movie. It's older than most of you here, maybe. But I think that's what's happening here. I hear you. Nothing has been voted upon. The passion of the individuals behind me is beyond the pale, and I'm sure you understand that. I'm certain of it. And I would gather, I would say that most of you will probably vote no on this issue. Because it's so divisive, that it's, it's, it's almost appalling. When I was a kid, and I punched little Harry in the bathroom because he's wearing a dress, when I got home, my ass was kicked, and Harry with the dress would've been ripped off by his parents. Those are, that's eighty years ago. And now, the laws that have been brought forth in this nation are put forth by a few. And that is so bothersome to me. And it is, and, and again, I, I don't envy your position, but I don't envy these folks either, because they have a load to carry. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jordan. I live in a new township just up the hill from here. And tonight, just hearing what is going on in this room, I have to say, I wouldn't feel embarrassed, but I also wanna laugh, 'cause it's like, it's all a bunch of scapegoating, in my opinion. Because you bring up, like, all these transgender students, and needless to say, they just wanna function. Anybody who's transgender wants to function, 'cause in all honesty, I just wanna live my life. I've been threatened. I've been called all the names in the book. And to be honest, you can call me a freak, I don't care. But in all honesty, people just wanna live. Focusing on this bathroom stuff is just complete BS. But to the lawyer, I would love to talk to you about type of mom, because in all honesty, I have to be trained to go and have walls in college. And let's face it, nature doesn't care about what you say is what is written in a book, 'cause in all honesty, nature doesn't care. But anyways, that's my time.
Ellen Paul, Amity Township. I'm getting into education tonight because I've never heard of a furry before. It's blowing my mind.
Did you look it up on your phone?
No, I just found this, it's a furry. Um, this is more of a question for our legal advisor than anything else. If the school board should vote this down, um, that would be considered a challenge to the law? Correct. Okay, if the school district challenges this law, the funding, individual lawsuits, is that all held at bay until a decision is made about the challenge?
It, it depends, um, on how a lawsuit would move forward, um, what the issue was filed on, and what the current state of the law is at the time. But probably not. It would, it would move forward for the present time based on what the current law is, and that's the reason.
Okay, so it's not held in abey, it's still the challenge, though?
That's your answer? No.
Thank you.
Rich Martino, Amity Township. I'd like to thank all the people that are here for the first time. I hope you'll come back. It was nice meeting the Doe family. I heard you have four students, four. So you're gonna vote to protect those four without regard to the other three thousand? That's what I'm hearing. And I hope you have the courage to vote no. And can each of you honestly say you understand exactly what you're voting on, despite listening to the questions? I don't think you do. And I also heard that if these policy changes are enacted, nothing will really be changed. And Tom, you, you said these students work well together, or the families do. What if they don't? What if they don't? What if they aren't as cooperative as you'd like? It's a whole different story, and, and so far, maybe they have been, but that's not guaranteed. Valerie, nobody's really answered your question. After-school activities. You go to the stadium for a football game, a soccer game, a field hockey game, whatever, and people walk over to the restrooms. And you've heard the word transgender, but you have cisgender, and you have gender fluid, et cetera, et cetera. So some forty-year-old pervert walks over there and decides to go in the ladies' room. You don't know ahead of time that he's gonna do it, and you haven't had that conversation. So he's in the ladies' room. Your policy says it's okay. I also don't understand, what's the rush? These, these notifications are from the Biden administration. They're supposed to go into effect August first. This is, this is October fourteenth. So, we're not worried about the deadline. You have three weeks till an election. These rules may be thrown out in January. Why are you rushing to get them done now?
Truth. Okay, that's super clear. The vote on it wouldn't happen until the twenty-fourth of November. So I don't understand what you're saying about how we're rushing it through. It has to go through three policy meetings.
Well, no.
So that, that piece you're talking about is incorrect.
It only goes through one policy meeting if you vote no. Correct?
Every, no, that's not true. Every time we wanna have a discussion about it, it's brought forth. The actual vote won't happen until the twenty-fourth of November.
And if it's voted no, I, I strongly think you're rushing, but that, that's, that's my opinion. Twenty-six states have sued the Biden administration. They haven't been fined any money. So I don't know where your million dollars is that, I, I don't believe you have any notice that the money's being withheld from the school district, your board, in May, but it hasn't happened yet. And as far as you being sued individually, I don't see how you can be sued for voting no when twenty-six states have already said no. It, it just seems to me that you're rushing. You're worried about a million dollars, maybe? But this is so important to you that you've had a solicitor here for a couple extra meetings. A solicitor whose contract falls for one meeting a month, unless that's been changed. And a solicitor whose firm charges for every six minutes that they're here. Tenth of an hour is how Fox Rothschild builds. So you're building up a couple thousand dollars just in discussing this. So you're not really worried about the money. All I'm asking is if the board looked, to whether you're doing the right thing or not. And, and if you really believe that, if you're really interested in doing the right thing, you can't vote yes on this. Thank you.
Just before you begin, but I just wanna address a couple of things. One, the timeline has been designed, so the final vote would occur after the election. So if election, if it happens to go the wrong way, we can pause on this. We have that flexibility, and that was purposeful by design. The other, if you wanna talk about the state study.
Sure, it's one, this is all going in that all of the current lawsuits across the twenty-six states that have filed are still pending. That's why you haven't seen, they're not, there have been no dispositions in any of those lawsuits, which is why there hasn't been, can't hang up this, X amount of money was issued. Um, in this case, it's court-worn this way. Um, they all are under preliminary injunctions, which are temporary, um, bans on the department being able to enact and enforce the twenty-twenty-four regulations and measures. But there hasn't been no fine courtroom in any of those lawsuits.
Danielle Dagl, Amity. As you obviously see, there's a bunch of parents and community members who... This is a very difficult topic for everybody, okay? But, what is the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results? What happened with COVID? You had uproar of parents because the district thought about the dollar signs for our students. They thought about the district as its own living thing. They did not think of individual students. They did not think about how this was impacting families. This is something obviously impacting students and families again. Do you think that if passing this is going to satisfy these parents who are obviously against it or have strong opinions about it? No, it's just gonna make them more and more pissed off.
Truth.
COVID, as time went, more and more parents got more pissed off. Because the district is, well, as a whole, we have to do this. No, leave it to the parents to take care of what is theirs, what they need to teach. Also, we're teaching our children to be their own individuals. They learn by example. But sometimes, they also can learn how to be their own individuals still at the same time. They don't have to follow just because this person votes Democrat, this person votes Republican, this one prefers mass, this one doesn't. There's their own, these are individuals with their own minds. Let them be who they are going to be, but also, these parents, we need to do right by our kids. The whole bathroom situation, honestly, I can say I didn't even know this was a situation about students going into bathrooms and bathrooms being monitored or not. However, last year, my son in second grade went to the bathroom on lunchtime. And he ended up telling me that he came home so hungry because he missed lunchtime, because he was actually bullied into being stuck in a stall, and nobody knew that he was in there. I had to address it to the teacher at that time. I had to address it to the principal, who did get down to the bottom of it, but you can't replace a meal that my son missed during school. That was very hard to hear. And that was only the first couple months of school. But... Sorry. You guys need to learn and respect the parents, respect the community that's coming up to speak their opinions. This is not a once-and-done thing. This is not COVID. Let's learn from our mistakes and listen to the parents who obviously have an issue with something like this. Thank you.
Shay Knopfling, thirty, guy you're talking about. The only reason why I give one name and address is 'cause I have good friends other than my... I want people to stop over. Rich took care of that. And, and this is now, sorry. What, my, mine look on this is that, it would be nice, Mr. Walter, you, you have, uh, almost a policy already of how you handle this. Why is that not an official policy, so the community can understand what you're doing? So right now, there is no vote. It's just, you're, you're handed this, uh... It's just, you're handed this legway that you have to deal with. But it would be nice to know in a policy what you are trying to achieve, reaching out to the parents, reaching out to the students. And at least, we understand now that this is a law, okay? We understand that. This is why elections are very important. So, you know, this is, we're a Democrat-run state now with a Democrat-run president. So right now, this is the law of the land. And you guys are gonna have to try and figure out how to make this work. A lot of people vote, and when they're passing their vote, they're not understanding the full comprehensive of what they're voting on. This might change this election. So if the Republicans win, this might all go away, and it might be a little bit easier for you guys to manage. It would still be nice to have a policy of how you are handling this so the community can also, should be two policies going in at the same time. The policy of how it's handled and the policy that you're passing soon, probably. Second thing is, this was rushed out of policy. Usually what happens is policy comes to the policy committee, you guys discuss it, your half hour is out, then you table it for the next meeting. And you continually do that until you have a policy that you are ready to give to the board. It does seem like a lot of you guys don't fully understand what is in this policy that you guys are... You might, but from sitting out here in the audience, it doesn't, I don't feel comfortable that you guys fully understand everything in this. Sports isn't included. I vote this, I believe, with sports as well. It's not, I learned that sports aren't included. It would be nice for more conversation. November twenty-fourth, I don't even know why you would pull up a date to make a vote when there's still questions to be answered. I mean, it should've been in policy review a little bit longer so more of the people in the community can have input. And your guys can have all your questions answered. And our solicitor could answer more questions for the public because apparently, we're all confused. So that's all I really have to say. Thanks.
I don't understand.
Oh, no.
I just need clarity.
Right.
I wanna make sure. Am I reading, what I'm really reading? That's why I ask.
And that's why the way that it works was explained, Sean. So to your point, if everything works in the proper order, the twenty-fourth would be when it would get voted. But that's not necessarily true because the process is that every time...
Twenty-fourth, thank you. Well, I know what I...
Sorry if I was all fighting. The point being that the discussion happens in the committee. If they feel that it needs to get presented to the entire board and the school to explain that and all this, then that's how it gets presented to the committee as a whole to discuss and whether our question is brought at the committee as a whole, as this gentleman did. It gets back to the committee. The process will go on and on and on. So we come to a resolution that if the board can't discuss it, everybody agrees on it, and then it would get assigned to the board.
So you're saying that earliest would be November twenty-fourth?
If everything like my students' pie was, I don't know what you wanna do.
Right.
Right.
But out here, it sounds like you're making your decision, November twenty-fourth.
Well, I hate to say it, but some people aren't listening because we said this one of the one times. Yeah, so it's like, I'll put it up on a whiteboard, you know? It's like, yeah. And, you know, again, to Richard's point, billions of minutes, six minutes, an hour, whatever the heck it is, the reason why she's here is because none of us are attorneys. So when you guys have questions and we have questions, we can refer to the subject matter experts, and they're worth every dime to dispel the confusion. So that's all.
Okay, and whatever the thing is, I'm here seven minutes back when I was... I wanted to thank you guys for being understanding and letting the people speak a little bit longer than their three minutes. It's important. Absolutely. I appreciate it.
Can I just say one thing? I'll just say this real quick. You know, the other lady in the corner back there. So one of the reasons I'm on this board is because previous, I bet you probably know who I'm talking about, but one of the previous boards that I, before I got on this board, told me one time to shut up and sit down. And after that, I've never forgotten that. I tried my hardest to at least look at you and listen to you and not disrespect you. So I'm not sure who said you were... What?
And you haven't shut up yet.
We'll talk about the name later, but it wasn't rich. But, yeah, yeah, I haven't shut up yet, sorry.
Hi, Adrian Duff, I live in New York City, township. I just wanted to, I know a couple of people have brought up the communication. I just wanted to come back to that part of it. This is my first board meeting that I've attended. I am a kindergartner in the district this year, so I'm sure it won't be my last because I have topics such as what we're discussing tonight. I just wanted to go through just the kind of process that it took me to be able to find out about tonight's meeting. So first, I did see it on social media. I saw people commenting that the meeting was at Flag Health. I went to the website. The calendar doesn't show the board meeting details. I went to the board meeting section of the website, which had a lot of details about the previous meeting. It didn't show the time for this meeting or the fact that there were three different meetings. So my question is just, you know, what could I expect being just a new parent to the school district? As far as communication about some of these meetings that are upcoming?
So, I'm sorry. If you go to our website, if you go on our school board, there is a section called Meeting Gates.
Yeah, I saw it, but like, for instance, today it showed the date, but it didn't show the time. And it didn't show the agenda.
Oh, I see.
But we use, we're used to download the calendar now. I just see it with my calendar, and it's over here.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. It was, it looks like we were late getting that information on there because it is a moment.
Right, it does intrigue the talk.
It does. And the community is like...
So we need to...
Yeah, because I'm sure the community, as you can see, though...
We need to do a better job.
Yeah, they wanna be involved in the community. When we have, you know, situations where it doesn't look like there's full transparency of the website, that makes people question, you know, what is being discussed? Is it trying to slip through without the community involved in? So I would just say that, you know, as a whole, we should really do a good job of making sure the information's out of the community in the way that we wanna portray the school district, right?
Yeah. Thank you. It sounds like the job for our new communication person to make a social media post going forward. It sounds like we should have our communication person make a post going forward on the agendas in the public that all of our parents can be made aware to resolve this issue.
That's what we were just talking about, tweak, especially the piece about where the committee meetings are posted, but there's no timing.
Yeah.
That's a...
Has all the time.
There is.
That's what I was trying to say. That's what I was trying to tell her, Paula, if you're like...
So you stick it over your camera.
So, is it John?
John.
John. John Doe the third would like to speak. Go over, John.
John Robinson, Douglas, Illinois, Pennsylvania. I'd like to direct my question to our esteemed attorney, Ms. Subers. Is that your name? I'm sorry. I didn't think it was Mr. That's for certain. How many pages is this talking about?
So the actual regulations that came out in twenty-twenty-four, the unofficial version came out with fifteen hundred pages and about fifty of that was the regulation. So look at the best version that I used, because it's easier to look at when you look at it.
That's okay, fifteen hundred's good. My question, which is obvious.
There's fifteen hundred for the preamble and the regulations about, I believe the regulations were fifty-five for the pages. That was all the description of those comments we talked about.
I remember Ms. Pelosi saying, it's a good bill, but I haven't read it yet. I can imagine all of you reading, going through fifteen hundred pages and understanding exactly what Title X is about.
Thank you.
I don't know.
I'm sorry?
That's why we have the lawyer.
That's time, that's not... Again, all of you have to, right? Am I wrong? All of you have to understand before you can vote on it?
Yeah, we've had, we've had...
You should get a good grasp on it.
We've had the meetings.
Right. This is, right, this isn't the first meeting.
That's a challenge. That is a challenge. Look how long it took us this evening just to explain a few things, how difficult that's gonna be. And again, I do not envy your position. I...
Right, especially since we work full-time jobs and do this sort of volunteer basis.
Thank you. On that, I totally see.
Make good job.
Can I just say one more thing? My real name is not John Doe. It is, it's not, my real name is Nick. I do live on Fifth and Long Street, Radio and Virgin River.
Thanks, Nick.
I did let my emotions get a little bit of the best of me. I didn't really get to say a lot of the things I wanted to say. I do wanna apologize for any, if I did offend anybody. I have no intentions to offend, like, offend anybody anywhere by anything that I said or whatever, but I still am not really, like, I know they were talking about, like, the, about the whole communication thing. And like, I feel like if you guys brought things up and, like, people wouldn't be so hostile if you guys brought things up in a better way, like, how, like you said, like, it's not final, like, it's, things could change, like, it's not, if you still got time, like, what I, say, if you, but I honestly feel like there should've been an email sent out and if you explained it just even, like, 'cause some, not everybody goes on there, like, from the primary care center that have four and six-year-olds and stuff that get emails every day. We're used to getting notified every, every day about our kids and stuff. So we're, we look forward to that email so we know what our kids are up to and what everything they're going through or whatever, you know what I mean? But something like this is very serious. I mean, if I found out, if I found out and I didn't hear from through a third party about this and my kid was going to a school like that, I would be in those front doors and, believe me, you guys, I would probably laugh in handcuffs because I would've been, I'm telling, I'm just being honest, and so would a lot of other parents. So I feel like if you guys, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just a suggestion. If you could just, just email, like, the primary care center, say it's not, it's not a definite thing, like, it's not, like, not, like, to be super concerned, like, it's not, you know what I mean? Just, you should at least let the people know, just like you let them know that we're...
We hear you, Nick, and we've, I've already said to the superintendent, we'll take a look at our communication.
I think they've been trying to figure out for years what's the right amount of communication. I don't think anybody thought it was in a poll like this. Nobody had any bad intentions. At least all the Facebook posts, and there are a lot of assumptions made about all nine of us that were completely unfair. And that's why it was hard to talk to you guys when you guys came in here screaming at us because...
Because you guys didn't explain to us. We came to...
You didn't give us a cheat.
Well, you guys didn't give us an email or no notification on what we, we're only going by hearsay, but we didn't get to hear your side. So if you guys sent out an email, we would've got to hear your side.
I do wanna say, I'm sorry I interrupted, but, you know, like, you're making it sound like we, the board provides all this, all this communication all the time and for this one thing, we didn't tell you anything. I'm, the stuff that's on the website that shows our, that shows our agendas that we post, like, the Friday before, that's the way we've been doing it. My kid grad, my oldest kid graduated in twenty-eighteen, I attended my first board meeting in two thousand and four. It's always been that way. And, and so, I'm not saying that just because we did it always, it's all makes it right. I'm just saying...
I'm talking about the primary center, like, which is...
No, you're talking, you're asking me, you're asking us about talking about this meeting that's happening. Of like, the board by this meeting.
Well, what I'm saying, if it has to do with the whole Boone district, that has to do with...
Correct, and you all aren't set the deal with, like, the board meetings, it has to do with the whole district. I'm just, I'm just saying, they, they, and I'm not saying just because that's the way it's been done since, at least two thousand and four, probably earlier, it means that that's the right way. I'm just saying, this, and I'm not saying this is the first time anybody said, oh, I didn't know anything about this, and so why didn't you tell us? But when we do hear that, we try to slow the process down as we did a month ago with this, with this particular agenda, especially. But it, this, this group of folks that have come today, I think, has kind of put the onus on us to reevaluate the way that we are notifying you of what's going on in this meeting that happens the second and fourth Monday of every month and has since, you know, when nineteen fifty-seven. You know, and, and that maybe we could, they change the way that we're...
Yeah, and that's all that I'm asking. Is that you're gonna have people, like, for example, like...
I mean, what I, what I want to know is that you understand that there was no attempt to hide what was happening as we were...
I can't say that, but I'm...
Because it was reported in the same way every other meeting has been reported.
But not for us. My kids are different than what I, I...
If your expectation was different, that's what we're gonna try to address. It can be so hard, so your expectations, we can meet, your expectations feel better.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
But it was reported to you in the same way that every other board agenda was reported to you, at least the last way there.
Right, and we hear you, Nick, so...
Wait, so you're saying that it was in my emails? 'Cause I have a lot of...
No, that's on the website.
So I would say...
We're gonna try to improve. That's what we're gonna do, that's what we're trying to do.
That's all I'm asking.
Right. We're here, you, and we, we hear you, Nick. We're here, yes.
I think the way people used to get their research from the newspaper, newspaper, they'd come to board meetings and people would read the paper and then...
Right, so a lot of stuff is placed in the website, but if you don't go to the website, then yeah, you're not heard of. So we need to tweak the communication a lot.
I was trying to bring to your attention, so that way, like, I'm promising to younger kids...
To Kristen's point, we have had people come to board meetings in the past, multiple people, and complain about the number of meetings they ever received. So we just have to find a balance of what's really what's happening.
Right, but some people love getting really emails and some people didn't.
Be important, stop.
I hate getting emails.
Well, we don't support you, you just like that, we don't support you.
But it comes if I did, I wanna know.
Right. I think, is there any other public comments on this issue?
I just, I just, listen, my name is not Pete, it's Patrick Evans, okay?
Thanks, Adam.
I know my brothers looked up to you, they, you, you know, they were at school with you, and they spoke very highly of you. I have faith in you, I do. I've given you my faith.
Thank you.
And you remember me, I know you do. Yeah, see the smile on your face? Yeah. I was troubled in school. I gave him a lot, I gave him a lot of raps. I was like, I was a bad kid. But just, I know everyone is morally has the best for the kids in mind. I know as the superintendent, I, I understand your job. I know what you do. I know you have to be careful what you say, how you do things because it's your ass, we know that.
Yes.
Just, right, you know.
Elegantly stated, yes.
I understand, but we all have, we all have had kids in the district or had kids in the district. My, my son has had a lot of problems already and with bullying, being bullied. And I didn't wanna really wanna talk about it, but, you know, it has been an issue. And I've had to go to the school over in Monocacy twice already. And, you know, we just, we want what's best for our kids, that's it. That's all we want, you know what I mean? We, we, right, I know we all do. And we all know what is morally correct. And we know, we've all been taught throughout school, all of you are, I'm assuming, I mean, rude, but above thirty, guessing, you were all... I'm sorry, I'm, 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 I'm B twenty-nine this year. But all of you were in school and you all were taught correctly, whether you followed any... and you all were taught correctly, whether you followed any religion, faith, whatever, but you all understood where you went to the bathroom, plain and simple, we, that was never an issue, we all know that, every single one of you, that's it, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the policy?
Well, the attendance was nice here, remember, the school board is sort of the last stop, right, this has passed through Pennsylvania Senate, Congress, Senate, Department of Education, so please reach out to all of your elected officials with what you find is wrong, so that it gets addressed throughout our state, throughout the federal government.
Um, so, I just wanted to say that, you know, in all this discussion, I, you know, I hear, I hear people saying that we want, they want us to improve their kids, but I don't really hear a lot of compassion for the transgender kids that are in our school district, I don't hear a lot of concern for their welfare, I heard, just let those, their parents even at home, I, I, you know, I, I don't think that, I don't think that's the, I don't think that's a plan forward, am I the only one who thinks that, that, um, some of the discussion we had was just very, um, dismissive of, of their wants and needs in life, and, and, you know, like, if you, if you make it impossible for a trans student to, well, for any student, if you make it impossible for any student to just pick a bathroom to use, you know, you're, you're, you're basically telling them you don't want to be part of public life at all, that you don't want to, you don't want to see them, you, you would just prefer that they didn't exist, I mean, if you can't create a bathroom in this building, you know, you can't do the school level today, you know, and I, I believe most of you already have three minutes, and, and I know nobody wants to follow the rules if you don't like the rules, you know, but, you know, I mean, I'd really like it if you have, if you've spoken already, that you had your chances, and I appreciate that I got to hear what you had to say. Um, and, and, that, that, I just, I just don't feel, I just don't feel that, um, you know, if, if you look at the, if you look at, we don't have very many cases currently, um, not, I don't even know, we've had many in the last ten years of issues with people using the bathroom, if it doesn't align with their biological gender, like with assaults, but, you know, assault numbers for students who are transgender, they're two and a half, like, one and a half, two and a half times more likely to be assaulted in the bathroom for using their biologically assigned bathroom instead of the one that that identified with. And, I mean, I just, I just don't see that, I just don't see a lot of compassion for that, for that concern and that issue coming from the parents, when, you know, we, we have to be, we have to be, um, here for every one of our students, including your students, but for every one of our students, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Julia, I, I thought that you were ready to keep us down, you wanted the communication issue this way. All right, Mr. Arbour.
I'm Markle Burgeboro, I came here last month, asking you to choose the safety of the children, as opposed to what the government, the federal government wanted you, wanted you to do to keep the money that they are holding over your head, that lies in the face of the safety of the children. And I wasn't going to come up, uh, until a board member just says a nonsense, the simple solution is, you don't say you can't use a bathroom, you use the bathroom that you were born to use. Every single person is born, a male or a female, the school district, even entertaining this, opens up more of this in the school, it's that simple. If parents want their child to live like this, they can do that at home, but in the school, in, in a school that would have, say, a uniform, I know that our school district doesn't have it, it's a public school that's fine, I did go to a school that had uniforms, you wear the male uniform if you're a male, you wear the female uniform if you're a female, it is that simple. Now, in a public school, you have a little more leeway with that, but there should be no leeway at all with the men's room, boys' room, and girls' room, that's it. They have another comment about the fifteen hundred pages, I would ask, the Sletter, do you know how many pages the original Title IX was?
The Title IX, federal statute, one sentence.
The thirty-seven words, not pages, words. When the federal government makes a fifteen hundred-page law, it is meant to screw with people's rights, or make people less safe. And it isn't even written by the people that are elected, it's written by bureaucrats, it's written by a deep state. Stand up for the children in the district, stand up against the government, the government's out to harm the kids in the school district. You're here to protect them. That's it. Awesome.
Any other public comment on the policy committee? You're killing me, Shane.
How killing me, for public comment? Yes, it's almost kind of hard.
Yeah, well, that's, well, I've given everybody the chance to finish up their thing.
I want to, because they're, they don't know that there's even a public comment section, where you can then comment, this is just for policy, so, sorry. So, right now- We're in the home stretch, though. Yeah, we're in the home stretch, right now, the order of business for a lot of the people, is, is we're discussing the policy committee, and what was discussed when the board members were, you know, discussing, there's, there's a couple of other items, the agenda and act, and it's open, the floor is open for public comment, so if you have any more to say, you can just come up and comment, you don't have to necessarily say it, or this particular section, right?
Right, so, I thought we were clear on that, the comments that are supposed to be made under each individual thing are what you're supposed to be talking about, so when you're cut at the policy committee comment section, you're not supposed to be talking about taxes.
Right.
Right, so, to Val's point, if you want to have a tax discussion at the very end of this meeting, that's when you would have a discussion on any other public issue.
So there's more opportunity to speak.
Right.
And the rules say-
Stay there, Rachel.
Yes, and, and we do try to really keep the three-minute rule in place, but this was a very important issue, I felt that we should let everybody have their, their say, so that nobody felt that they didn't get to express their opinions.
We do appreciate that.
You're welcome, we try to be good. Um, is there any other public policy, I'm going to move on to the next topic if there is not. All right, so we're moving on to old business, which is item eleven A one, which is the minutes, anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes? Any public comment about the minutes?
One more question, when's the next meeting?
In two weeks.
Today, same time?
Yes, same bat time, same bat chat.
Six, six-thirty?
Oh, and it's, well, it'll be a voting meeting, uh, well, no, I apologize, it'll be a finance-
Policy will be filed when we, whenever the-
Yeah, you asked about the policy meeting?
Policy meeting happens once a month.
Six-thirty?
Yes.
Yes, for the policy, yes.
I brought them in, you don't have to be in a blue hat.
And Rob will be here. Rob Hurley will be here.
I know that you're, you're telling us that, but, like, like I was suggesting, can, can you send notifications to the other parents as well?
Email.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, one thing that was brought to, brought to our attention is that in some way, shape, or form, the times aren't being set up, so we'll make sure that that's taken care of.
Because, like, I came in here, and I just came in, and if I would have knew the whole situation, and that it wasn't just, there was going to be more, it wouldn't have been-
I got you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right.
Good night, guys, thank you.
We don't have anything under news.
Good night, Shane. Good night, Shane, thank you, sir, my man, Shane.
Oh, old business we do.
Good night, Rich.
Oh, public comment? Wait, what's this here? No, I said about the, right, I did ask for that already.
Do you have a comment on any issue? I didn't-
On, about the minutes, yeah, yeah, any comments on the minutes, I thought nobody had anything, right, so then we're into new business?
Yep.
Right, we don't have any action list going on there, any public comment for new business, there isn't anything to talk about, so then the presentation by public on issues.
Sorry, I was trying to rush the process.
That's, yeah, it's okay.
Joe, you can stay.
We've only been up, we've only been up since five o'clock.
I'm trying to talk him out of the gas pump.
Hold him down, hold him down.
Does anyone have any issues they would like?
I'm gonna let you all go home.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
All right, so then we get to our, then we get to our favorite, Shane. Killing me, Smalls.
Shane Cockley, thirty guys on there, I want to ask, what is the update on the TIF? Have you talked to the township, have you talked to Perps County?
Mr. Alter was just here.
Yeah, I, I, I've reached out, I, I've responded, I've reached out again, it's a great day. Okay, um, second part of that, when you did your tax analysis of how much income was coming in, did you use the, I think seniors get a thirty percent discount on their taxes, and there's also, I believe, a senior citizen freeze that they can qualify as well?
That's a big part of our income.
Honestly, the analysis, like, I put that a year ago this morning, so I have to pay for, see what was in that.
Is that an income-driven benefit?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's income and age, I think it's sixty-five plus, uh-
Plus a threshold of income.
Threshold of income.
So twenty thousand a year.
I don't qualify.
And, and one more other comment on, uh, what you said, Julia, um, I, I do believe that a lot of people, their concerns aren't necessarily with the, the transgender people as much as adults dressing up as she, that they're really, they're really not, they don't really have an issue, but they're using it to cause harm to other people, and that's, that's not the-
And I did hear some of that.
That's not the, yeah, it's not the necessarily, the trans people taking advantage, it's, you know, just regular people who have wrong, uh, ju, wrong agendas causing harm.
I just had-
So I think there's, there's that aspect more than the actual problem with the, the kids that are identifying.
I, I, I just felt I had to say something, I felt there was a little bit of vilification, intentionally or unintentionally, I was feeling bad, it's just-
Yeah, I, I do believe, though, that's a, a, a bigger concern, is people taking advantage of something that they're not, they're not, they're, they're doing it, and I don't think high school kids or middle school, I'm, I'm talking out of court.
I'm thinking of putting down your kids.
Good night, Shane.
Thanks, Shane.
Well, good night, George, good night, Shane.
But I don't need to be no case for that, though, like, but still, we're not saying assaults is okay, we're not saying-
No, no, I, I know, I'm just saying-
Like, boys sneaking into the girls' bathroom, or they sneak with teenagers, and go out for dead weight, so it's crazy.
How can you talk to them?
Yeah, and, that's never okay, and I'm sure the girls will scream and kick them all out, and-
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, they'll be shooting.
And maybe women will allow that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. I need to just chop this.